Hello?
Hello.
Howdy, howdy, howdy. Okay. Y'all having a good day?
Amen. We are. Thank you, Coach. Hope you are.
Can't complain.
Well, it is six o'clock, so I'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council meeting, Legislative Work Session for today, which is April the 30th. The invocation will be done by Reverend Dr. Edwin Jones of Bright Star United Methodist Church. We'll have our pledge allegiance, and then I will go over the announcements and presentations for our meeting tonight. I have a flag. I don't know if that can be seen on YouTube, but there probably will be in the council room as well where we have the flags. So we'll have the invocation first by Reverend Dr. Edwin Jones of Bright Star United Methodist, and then the Mayor Pro Tem, if you don't mind, Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller, leading us in the pledge allegiance. Please let us prepare for the invocation.
All right. Thank you. Maya, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, good. Well, good evening to everybody. I hope you are all well. And on behalf of all our citizens, I want to thank you for what you are doing. The thoughts that I was meditating on this week comes from the story of Noah. And so I would like to just read this to you and then have a little prayer that I think Noah would have prayed. It says, "When you see a rainbow, remember that one person can make a difference." "I had never seen a rainbow until after I followed through on what God asked of me." He placed a rainbow in the sky as a covenant to humanity, that he would never again destroy the world with water. The next time you see a rainbow, think of God's promise to you, you can make a difference." And here's the Noah's prayer for us. Dear Lord, please help my fellow councilmen and women to understand the power of one. Speak to them about the unique task you call them to, and give them the world and the power to follow through so that they too can make a difference. We ask it in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
of America.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation
nation.
under God, indivisible, of liberty.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Dr. Jones, we appreciate the prayer and the story about Noah. It's a blessing. Silence your cell phones. Mine is ringing. Let me turn it off. I apologize. But welcome to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. I am Douglasville's mayor, Rochelle Robinson. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in whole or by part. Make sure my microphone is on. Yes, it is. Or by part, by teleconference. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons that are anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. And after I do the attendance call, then we'll do the protocol for how the meeting is going to take place. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
I am here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Good to hear your voice. Councilmember Chris Watts. Unmute your phones, Coach.
I'm here.
Very good. I thought I saw your face in a little icon. We have this little picture, so. Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
I am here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. You get to hear your voice as well and see you.
And you also.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Mark Adams.
Present, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. He was in the front of the line. He was already on when I got on. Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I am here. Thank you.
Good evening. Good to hear your voice. Councilmember Samuel Davis.
I am present, Madam Mayor.
I see you, Councilman Davis.
Thank you.
And Councilman, you're welcome. Councilman Howard Estes.
I am here as well. Good to see everybody.
Good to see you as well. Now, staff, may I call your name, please, respond in the affirmative as well. City manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Your Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Assistant City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Present, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker.
I'm present, Mayor.
Good to hear your voice, Ms. Vicki. Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace James.
She's not present.
Okay. Her name's on the list. I will mark her off. City Attorney's Office, Mr. Joel Dotson. Attorney Dotson is not available. Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Good to hear your voice, Ms. Littlefield. Our Police Department, our Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Sue Ann Shaw.
I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Human Resource Director, Ms. Tia Austin Bean.
Present, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Clerk Administrator, Ms. Angie Crocker. Angie Cochran. Okay, she is here. Our Graduate Fellow, Ms. Emily Cardaway.
Present.
Good to hear your voice, Ms. Emily. Our Conference Center and Tourism Director, Ms. Jennifer Johnson.
I am here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to hear you. We'll move on to our Accounting Technician One, Ms. Mandy Pope. Okay, she isn't here. I thought she'd be representing Finance. Our Community Relations Director, Mr. Jason Post.
I am here, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Good to hear you, Mr. Jason. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Travis Landrum.
Present, Madam Mayor.
Good to see you, Mr. Travis. I have to get out there and run with you. Our Golf Professional, Mr. Chris Cartwright. From West Pines.
Madam Mayor, he will be present shortly. He is en route.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Landrum. Public Services Director, Mr. Greg Roberts.
Present, Miss Mayor.
Good to hear your voice, Mr. Greg. And our Community Development Director, Ms. Patrice Williams.
I'm here, Mayor Robinson.
Good to hear your voice, Ms. Patrice. So now we'll talk about our remote meeting and how this will be conducted, and then we will go over the protocol for how we will conduct the meeting tonight after the remote information is read. And we are becoming pros. We've been doing this for a while, but we still need to make certain that we put all the information out there, and of course, for the public to hear, if anyone is listening, by live, while we're live streaming and on YouTube. This meeting, this open meeting of Douglasville's Mayor and City Council is being conducted by teleconference consistent with Official Code of Georgia Annotated Section 50-14-1G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of coronavirus and to reduce risk of COVID-19 illness. That code section, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows local governments to meet by teleconference in the event of an emergency, so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software, as shown on the city's website, describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. All the elected officials and staff are attending by teleconference, and interested members of the public are attending by live stream via YouTube. Instructions for the City Council and staff. Let me now give some meeting instructions to our council members and staff to assist us with this teleconference legislative work session. As you know, we conduct our meetings by committee. So I will ask of each committee chairperson, after you have read an agenda item and heard the comments of our staff member, at the proper time for council questions or comments, please call on each council member by name and invite him or her to speak. Council members may, please hold your comments until your name is called. For any reason or response, please wait until the committee chairperson or I yield the floor to you. And each time, please state your name before speaking. I know it's a lot, but we're going to try to get through this. If council members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the committee chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Now, these are instructions to the public. For applicants and all other participants, be advised that this meeting will allow public comment as well. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and listeners are not required to identify themselves. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Now, these are our general instructions. A work session where agenda items are presented for discussion, no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items for discussion tonight on Monday at 6:00 PM, our voting meeting. If the business that any citizen wishes to speak on is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates section to discuss any other matters related to pending or potential city businesses. There are a few protocol issues that I'd just like to make everyone aware of, if you're listening in the audience. I'll ask that you would listen closely so there's no misunderstanding. I've asked you, please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair, and if you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation will result in the chair discontinuing your opportunity to speak. We'll have one person speaking at a time. It'll be a little easier because we have to let you, call you in to speak remotely. And I remind you that we only are required to accept public comments during required public hearings for zoning matters. Now, the agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then the person representing the agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation first, and at that time, they'll be the only person for, only opportunity for that person to present. Then myself and council members will possibly ask questions for the applicant or seek additional information. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There will be a maximum of 30 minutes for each of those to speak in favor or against, and each person will have five minutes to speak in favor of the agenda item or in opposition, in a totality of 30 minutes for each side, the pro side and the con side. In order to speak, a council member in the council meeting, there must, there was a form that you must have signed, and no forms will be accepted after the meeting convenes. But if you are talking by phone, you have to mute your phone or the computer, and then unmute it before you speak. And each person has one opportunity to speak, and this is not a question or answer format, but we would ask for your address, your name and your address, and then make your comments to the council member who is the committee chair. And that is it. That's a lot of instructions, but hopefully, we've made them clear so that you, a little clearer so that you can follow along with us. Now, we'll go on to our first committee, which is Economic Development Committee, and that is chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Do you have any business this evening, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Call finance to order tonight. We have several items. Item A is authorize the mayor to sign a sales order agreement with ADP LLC for employee time clock equipment and services. Ms. Callan, I believe, is going to help us with that item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen Callan, Finance Director for the City of Douglasville. This is a one-year agreement for two time clocks at the Courthouse Square location. One for upstairs for the administration, one for downstairs, and 2218 a year, which is about $134 a month.
Thank you, Ms. Callan. Is this somewhat of a renewal in that we do this year after year? And have we been doing business with ADP for many years in this regard?
This one in particular is for the Courthouse Square, so it's a new. But yes, sir, we have had renewal. They renew indefinitely. So that's why we require council approval at such a low amount.
Yes, ma'am.
It's only 2218. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Callan. Coach Watts, do you have any questions for Ms. Callan or any comments?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Nicole Miller, any question or comment?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Terry Miller, Mayor Pro Tem.
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Sam Davis. Mr. Davis, do you have any question or comment concerning this item?
No.
Ms. LaShawn Burdanley?
No, I'm chairman. Thank you.
And Mr. Howard Estes?
Nothing for right now. Thanks.
What about you, Madam Mayor? Do you have any question or comment concerning this item?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would appreciate then, if we could, in the essence of time, if we could place this item on the consent agenda. And I'll move on to item B. Item B, adopt an ordinance to amend the City of Douglasville's fiscal year 2019-2020 general fund budget. Ms. Karen Callan, please help us with that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our third quarter budget amendment for the general fund. And although if you look in your attachment, there's a lot more detail than what I, but the memo has highlighted the very general, most important items for our major revenue adjustments. This is due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We do have $307,000 for projecting as reduction in sales tax revenue, hotel motel tax revenue, $254,000 for Hunter Park and Jesse Davis, $171,000. The closure of West Pines, $396,550. But depending on what you approve this eve, this evening with West Pines, we will adjust the numbers on our fourth quarter budget amendment because this assumes that West Pines is closed through the end of the fiscal year. We have a $600,000 reduction in the municipal court fund revenue, and some of that is prior to the COVID pandemic. And because of the revenue reductions, we are having to use $1.4 million of our projected fund balance. And this is some of the discussion we had during our budget hearings this past week.
Thank you, Ms. Callan. I know that we are somewhat familiar with that, and that, as you had stated earlier in the week, we did have our budget meetings concerning this. Again, I will request to see if there's any question or comment concerning the item. We'll start with Madam Mayor this time.
I'm trying to push my button. No, sir, I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What about Mr. Howard Estes?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Burdanley?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Sam Davis?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Terry Miller, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
No questions or comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Nicole Miller?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
And Councilman Chris Watts?
No que, no questions at this time.
Thank you all each. I would then request also that item B be placed on the consent agenda since there were no questions or comments concerning the item. Moving on to item C. Adopt an ordinance to amend Section 2.53 of the Administrative Ordinance to repeal provisions requiring council approval for certain individual capital purchases and to remove certain restrictions on asset transfers. And to amend subsection 2-1549 of, to remove and to remove the three-year limit on contracting authority for the city manager. Ms. Littlefield and Ms. Callan were going to handle that item for us. Ms. Littlefield, would you like to go first, please?
Yes, please. If you're looking at the document that is entitled Red Line, I'll take you through it, and that'll, they'll help you see the changes that we're proposing. Tonight, you'll look at an administration ordinance and a personnel ordinance that affect the powers of the city manager. Our attempt here is to bring you more in line with what other cities are doing and to get rid of some of the unnecessary restrictions on her powers. Under the Red Line document, you'll see that we're repealing certain sections. The first section we're repealing is just definition that you don't need anymore. The second section that we're repealing is to repeal that provision that says that all capital purchases of $25,000 or above must be approved individually by the council, whether or not they have been budgeted. We believe this is unnecessary. If you budgeted, you already know what it is. And if it's over $25,000, the city manager is not going to be able to spend that money in the budget unless it's there anyway, so that that restriction is unneeded. Coming down to section two, more about the budget here. This is an attempt to get rid of some restrictions that you don't, you don't actually need. And you'll see that what we're eliminating here is matters with regard to funds within budgets. And in some cases, we're not changing the legal level of control, which will stay at the department level. However, we would get rid of the restriction that says the city manager cannot transfer line items that relate to utility services. And we would allow her to transfer personnel from one department to another and to transfer those funds, even though that's a department-to-department transfer. That would be an exception to the limit on her powers. We would also get rid of the, the restriction that says she cannot transfer more than $25,000 into or from a line item within an amendment period. That's, that's unnecessary. Section three of the ordinance relates to contracts, not budgets, but it's similar here. We're proposing to get rid of the restriction on multi-year contracts. That's a leftover from where, when she couldn't contract for more than a year, and we need to get rid of that. Also, D that we're getting rid of about binding succeeding councils is already state law. You don't need that. The change of substance that we're proposing here is to get rid of the restriction on her powers to contract for not more than 36 months. As you'll see tonight, when you look at your agenda, we have several small-dollar contract matters that are coming to you only because the contract renews over and over again, and it can be longer than three years. And you see lots and lots of these, which is the reason we're proposing to get rid of that. I believe those are all the changes. Did I miss anything, Karen?
No, ma'am. You covered it well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Ms. Callan, did you have anything at all that you needed to? And I'm sorry that if I'm being repetitive here, just want to make sure you had nothing to add to that, correct?
Yeah, no, sir. Nothing to add.
Okay. All right. Once again, we will travel around to our various locations and ask each of you. Coach Watts, we'll start with you. Did you have any question concerning this item?
Yes, I just had one. Ms. Littlefield, why, you know, we're taking these restrictions off with this ordinance. Why, why were the restrictions there in the first place? Have they just always been there? And we're getting more in line, as you said, with other jurisdictions? Or was there a reason why they used to be in place and we're removing them now?
Well, that, it, the, some of them have been there a very long time. Others have been there not so long. The restriction with regard to how long you can contract and for how much has always been there in some form or another, although we have been loosening that up over and over again through years. With regard to transferring utility funds, I believe that was put on maybe seven, 10 years ago, when the council was dissatisfied with some transfer the city manager made. And likewise, I believe there's one more there. I'm not sure where the $25,000 line item came from. It may have been an attempt to be consistent with the contracting authority.
Okay, thank you. I was just, was just curious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Miller?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller?
No questions or comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Sam Davis?
No questions or comments. I'm good.
Councilwoman LaShawn Burdanley?
Thank you. No questions?
Councilman Howard Estes?
Coach Watts already covered my question, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Madam Mayor?
Ditto. The same as Councilman Estes and Coach Watts. He asked a question that I was going to ask. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all. And, and thank you to staff and Ms. Littlefield for, for the work in that ordinance and those ordinance changes. Once again, with the questions and concerns being answered, and it seems to be somewhat of a housekeeping item, I'm going to request that be placed on the consent agenda. Move on to item D. Authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Pitney Bowes Incorporated to lease a postage machine for City Hall. Ms. Chelsea Jackson, could you help us with that, please?
Yes, sir, I will. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. I mean, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I can address both other items. They refer to the same thing.
Items D and E?
Yes, sir.
Let me go ahead then, and I'll read that item also, then you can comment on each. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll read item E. Authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Pitney Bowes Incorporated to lease a postage machine for the public safety and courts building. Okay, Ms. Jackson, now take it on. Take it away.
Yes, sir. So the current lease agreement that we have with another company is ending. Staff did research. After careful research, we noticed that the new agreement that the current company is proposing was an increase in costs, and it was the same equipment. So staff went out, did research, and received a new lease agreement from a new company with newer equipment and better services, and that would be the company Pitney Bowes. This also adds on the lease agreement and the equipment to the public safety and courts building as well. This also adds on the lease agreement and the equipment to the Public Safety and Courts Building as well.
Okay, does that agreement give us, you said, better terms? Does that mean a lesser rate and a better amount of service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my only question. Madam Mayor, do you have any question or comment concerning Item C and D? I'm sorry, D and E?
No, sir. Don't, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Yes. Mr. Councilman Howard Estes?
No questions.
Councilwoman LaShawn Burdanyly?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Sam Davis?
No question. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller?
No questions or comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Nicole Miller?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
And Coach Chris Watts, Councilman Chris Watts?
No questions for me.
Thank you all. I appreciate that. Seeing that there is no other, no discussion or question concerning these two items, C and D and E, is that correct? I'm getting myself confused. I can only see one at a time. I would ask that these items be placed on the consent agenda. And Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight on finance. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Finance Chair. We'll move on to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanyly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have an item under Housing and Community Affairs, and the item reads as follows. Authorize the mayor to sign the Emergency Shelter Grant Application to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs in support of Vision Twenty-One Concepts Incorporated. And we'll start with Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Fay Lattimore. She has completed a speaker comment card, and I will read her name out for the record, and then she will repeat after me and then state her name and her address. Ms. Fay Lattimore, just verify that you can hear me.
Fay Lattimore. Thirty-seven seventeen Masters Road, Elwood, Georgia.
And Mayor and Council, this is a routine agreement, a routine application that you all have received over the past few years from a lot of nonprofit organizations throughout our community. If you have any questions for Ms. Lattimore, she's here to answer any questions you may have.
Lattimore, for being a part of our meeting. This is Councilwoman Dr. LaShawn Burdanyly again. Just a question. Our tech person is working on my PDF, and I can't open it on my iPad. But just a question. What amount of funds are you applying for this year, Ms. Lattimore?
This year, we are applying for sixty-thousand dollars, and we're looking for those funds to cover some costs for the shelter operations and the services. And I am prepared to detail those services.
Okay, and how much of an increase from last year?
Last year, we requested sixty thousand as well. But we were informed, because we were in a new agency, we were awarded fifteen thousand.
Okay, and that's new agency to the Department of, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, not a new agency as your, the work that you do. That's correct?
No, ma'am. We have been in operation since two thousand and five, but we were a new agency to the Department of Community Affairs.
Right. And I know that you're doing great work. You opened a women's shelter. You have the men's shelter. Do you have any other extensions that you are planning on opening this year?
Well, what we would like to do is expand our work with the Department of Community Supervision. We currently just have twelve beds allocated for them, but when we have overflow and we do not have any clients for the emergency shelter, then we use those beds as well. But we would like to expand that operation.
Okay. And my last question, and then we'll go around and let everyone ask questions. My last question to you, is this a matching grant? Do you all have to match a percentage?
We do have, excuse me, we do have to match. It's one-hundred percent match, but we can match with in-kind funds. So we had a house donated to us through Bank of America, so we're actually using the market value of that house for our match.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Ms. Lattimore. Now I'll go around. We'll start with Madam Mayor. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, Dr. Burdanyly. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming in, Ms. Lattimore.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one quick question, and I guess I just wanted a clarification. This is strictly a grant application to the Department of Community Affairs. It doesn't require any funding on the city's part. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, I wanted to be clear. So we're basically just sponsoring the application itself, in a way?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The Department of Community Affairs requires approval from the city of Douglasville, which is where our facilities are located, to ensure that the services we are providing are in line with the cities.
All right. This is Councilwoman Burdanyly again. It's a support letter in support of your services. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that question?
Yes, ma'am. It's a support letter. Is that correct? A support letter of your services?
Yes, it's a support letter of our services.
Okay, I just, the last part, I just heard you state that also the city would ensure that the, that you're following the guidelines that is outlined in the Department of Community Affairs. Is that, did I interpret that correctly?
Actually, the city's approval is based on the services that we provide to the cit- or not to the city. The services we provide to the community align with the vision and mission of the city.
Okay, so just intercepting, do we, Ms. Lattimore, does your agency organization complete a report, like an annual report or quarterly report to the city?
We have not.
Okay. All right. That's something that I would like to see if I'm asked the question. I mean, I know a lot of the services that you provide, and there's another organization that we do a support letter for. But I'd like to see a report, so that if I'm asked in the community that I can be able to articulate that correctly. Now I'll move forward with questions. Councilman Davis?
No, ma'am. Thank Ms. Lattimore for coming in again.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, Miller, did I miss you? Did you have any other questions?
No, thank you, ma'am. Sure, she answered my question.
Okay, all right. Councilman Estes?
No questions right now. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Nicole Miller?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Watts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question. Ms. Lattimore, I was just curious about the house that was donated. Where is the house in the city limits or in unincorporated Douglas County? Just out of curiosity.
The house is in the city limits.
Okay. Where's it located? I just, so I know when I see it.
It's on Coquit Street.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for all you do. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Okay, and Ms. Lattimore, you actually have several houses in the city, and your organization is also in the city, too. Is that correct?
That is correct. We also use the house located on Strickland Street. And that's for men. We have a house on Coquit Street for four men. And then we have our shelter, which is on the property of the church, Crossroads for Life Ministries, and that house is fourteen men.
Okay. All right.
And we have that facility divided where we have a section for our re-entry clients, because Department of Community Supervision has specific requirements for their housing. And then we have six beds in the back of the facility, and we use that for our emergency shelter clients, which can be thirty to sixty days.
Right, right. And I think you had, you had two houses on Coquit. Did that change?
The church, actually, we do have two houses. Crossroads has a house on Coquit as well, eighty-one seventy-eight. And we're still working on that house to open it up to house veterans.
Okay, yeah. And I know these homes were, the ones that I've seen, you restored them? They were dilapidated homes?
Absolutely. Definitely the one that we're using for the veterans home, it was very dilapidated. We did a full restoration on that house. And we also received a lot of donations with businesses in the community to assist with that.
Right, looks really good.
And then Women's Shelter is located on Sandy Lane.
Right, and you're always full.
Always full.
Busy.
Always full. With the, with the women and women and children. What we do not have, and I failed to mention that when you asked me about expansion, is we also want to expand and open up homes for families. Recently, we received numerous calls where the husband and the wife and the children are right now, we, our facility is only for women and children and not for the husband.
Okay, great. And last, our Councilman Mark Adams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions. Just wanted to let Ms. Lattimore know how much we appreciate the things that she is doing in the community and keep up the good work. We thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I would ask if it's okay with our mayor and council members that we place this on the consent agenda? So, okay? If anyone objects, let me know. All right. If not, Madam Mayor, there are no other items under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burdanyly. I appreciate that handled very well. We'll move on to the next committee, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of tonight, there's no items. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. The next committee, number nine, is Personal and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight. Item number twenty-dash-one-four-one. To adopt an ordinance to amend and enact various provisions of the Administration Ordinance and the Personnel Policies and Procedures Ordinance to revise provisions related to employee layoffs to require a position control plan to be administered by the Human Resources Director in lieu of other records, and to authorize the city manager to administer various employment matters. And I believe Ms. Austin Bing will take over.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. To you, Austin Bing, six-six-nine-five Church Street, Human Resources. If you were to click on your attachments, I will take us through. On, beginning on page two, what we have provided for you. Staff has conducted research as it relates to city manager's personnel authority. And on, starting on page two, you will see other cities in our area are local to Douglasville that have responded to us, whose personnel authority lies solely with the city manager. If you will scroll down, you will also see those actual policies from those cities spelled out as it relates to city manager's personnel authority. We receive responses from City of Roswell, Waycross, City of Duluth, Newman, Noonan, excuse me, and City of Cartersville, and all of their policies are located within the attachment. So we are making a recommendation that we are in line with our city manager having personnel authority. And we will talk about some of the changes to the ordinances. Beginning on page ten, Section two of the attachment, you will see the hierarchy of authority spelled out as it relates to mayor and council authority, city manager authority, as well as the Human Resources Director, and what department heads would be responsible for. If you will scroll down to page twelve, we are proposing updates to our definitions. You will see the definition of furlough. You will also see the definition of layoffs. We are making updates to those and some other minor changes to grammar and wording. If you will scroll a little bit further down to Section four, also has some changes for the city manager and her authority as it relates to positions. And just collectively, a high level, her authority that we're proposing would include organization chart changes, transferring of employees, as Ms. Littlefield mentioned earlier, job titles, and cleaning up any of those things that we are constantly coming to you all for approval. Whereas, again, the trends and other cities are, that authority lies with the city manager. If you will scroll down a little bit further to page, starting on page fifteen, there is further updates as it relates to the appointment or hiring. Again, city manager having that authority to approve those appointments and hiring. Coach Watts asked me earlier, as it relates to the mayor's and council's authority to approve appointed staff. And so you will see that spelled out in the ordinance as well. That will, that will not change. We are also making changes to voluntary demotion language. Again, city manager authority in our department transfers, city manager authority as well as reinstated employees. So all of those personnel changes as it relates to staff movement, we are proposing that the city manager has that authority. If you will scroll down, page sixteen is where we began recommendations to update our separation policy, specifically furloughs and layoffs. We have those definitions updated for you to review. And generally, the city manager has this authority as well. Again, all under personnel authority for the city manager to order furloughs or layoffs. Those definitions are included. Also gives the HR department guidance on how to conduct those, to provide written notice, orders of recall, and any other pertinent information as it relates to furloughs and layoffs. So we want to clean up this language and make sure that we're in line and also legally, in legal compliance with what the city is trying, would try to accomplish if we were to incur this. So this is all that I have before you. You have a red line version, and you also have a final version without any red lines. And I'll be happy to take any questions. And if Ms. Littlefield also has anything else to chime in, as she assisted with this ordinance as well.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, we'll just go through the list. Councilman Adams, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the hard work that staff has done on this to make changes and adjustments. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, Nicole Miller?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. T. Miller?
Mr. Chair, I have no questions or comments at this time.
Dr. Burdanyly?
Thank you, Chairman Watts. I have no comments. I just have a, I mean, I have no questions. I have a comment. Just wanted to say that the office of our city manager and her staff, along with HR and legal, do a very good job in communicating with us.
office of our city manager and her staff, along with HR and legal, do a very good job in communicating with us um in detail. So I just want to say I appreciate that. I ditto Councilman Adams' comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Burdanyly. Uh Councilman Davis. Councilman Davis, do you have any questions or comments? Hit your mute button. I'll move on to Mayor. Uh Madam Mayor, oh, go ahead, Mr. Davis. Do you have any questions or comments?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, um Chairman Watts. I would say, um I don't have any questions, but the comment I wanted to um thank Ms. Austin Bing and Human Resources Department and the City Manager's Office for reaching out to other cities so that we will be in compliance and moving forward with the the responsibilities that our city manager has. And as Dr. Burdanyly has said, uh we don't have very, we don't have very many surprises at all. The staff is very respectful in keeping us in in the loop of what's going on, and I trust that we'll continue to have that relationship. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And um I just would like to add, Ms. Austin Bing, uh great, great job of getting all the information out to us. And uh we we have a uh city manager second to none, and uh we just appreciate all the, everybody's hard work and putting this forth. Ms. Littlefield, as we, as we move out of this, you you have anything to add?
Uh no, sir. I think these are changes you need to make.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Littlefield. Uh if it's okay with everybody, uh unmute and tell me you're you're against it, uh but I'd like to place this on a consent agenda if it's appropriate. Thank you. Uh Madam Mayor, that's all I have. And Personnel Organization will place that on consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Chairman Watts. We'll move on to item ten, which is Planning and Development Committee, and we'll go back to Councilmember Chairman Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have one item tonight under Planning and Development, and that is adopt a resolution repealing R dash twenty twenty dash eight, which imposed a rezoning moratorium and other restrictions and extended through July eighth of two thousand twenty current procedures for social distancing while performing certain actions regulated by the Uniform Development Ordinance. Ms. Patrice Williams is going to help us with this. Go ahead, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. There's, this resolution would repeal Resolution twenty twenty dash eight, which placed a moratorium on filing and other processes related to the city's unified development ordinance. In the wake of COVID nineteen, the moratorium was placed on zoning and development items to minimize personal contact. While the resolution was set to expire June second, twenty twenty, staff has been able to adjust to the current climate, and we feel strongly that it would be appropriate to lift the moratorium at this time. For now, public meetings will continue to be held virtually. This would also include the planning commission meetings, pre-application meetings, and any other meetings with potential applicants. Applicants will be strongly encouraged to file applications electronically until further notice. However, for those applicants who may experience challenges submitting electronically, we have Dropbox. We will locate Dropbox in front of the annex from eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Inspections will continue to be conducted by appointment only. The number of representatives on the site will be limited. Inspectors will continue to conduct certain inspections by visual conferencing. By lifting the moratorium, we will begin receiving and processing applications for for July and August. We have been in conversations with several developers who are very excited about the potential action taken by Mayor and Council. We look forward to getting back to business as usual.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh great planning there. I hope that it works as you all have planned, and I appreciate all of the adjustments that you have made during this pandemic time. Uh I'll go down the list and uh see if there are any questions or comments for you from Mayor and Council, and we'll start with Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, uh Councilman Adams. Thank you, Ms. Patrice, for the presentation. I understand that we are doing well with permitting and building and development and all of that. So I think it is um it makes sense to lift the moratorium so that we can move forward with business and try to help our community uh recover as best we can financially, in whichever department we can. So thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh Councilman Howard Estes.
Uh no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh Councilwoman LaSharon Burdanyly.
Thank you, um Chairman Adams. No questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh Councilman Sam Davis. Unmute yourself, Mr. Davis, please. Can you hear me, Mr. Davis?
I can hear you. I just unmuted. No questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Hey, Mr. Chair, no questions, but I will say I, from what I I'm hearing throughout the industry right now, there there seem to be raring to go, and I'm surprised that uh it's going to be coming back pretty quickly, I think, at least as far as construction goes. But it's 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 an encouraging sign.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Uh Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
And no, I have no questions at this time. I just want to say I'm really excited about the new growth and possibilities and us staying on track for everything that we've been working so hard for in this community.
Thank you. Thank you. And uh Councilman Coach Chris Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh have no questions, just uh appreciate uh Ms. Williams uh everything that she's done in planning and development.
Thank you, Councilman Watts, and thank you all for your comments and your input. Um I'm going to assume that there seems to be consensus that we are ready to go back to work uh and remove the moratorium earlier than what was originally planned for July eighth. So I'll ask that this be placed on the consent agenda. And Madam Mayor, that's all that we have under Planning and Development tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to Public Information. I mean, I apologize, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Hey, guys. And yep, we've got several items this uh this evening, and the first is to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Bartow Paving Company for road resurfacing on um sixteen dash seventeen Elme completion project. Sorry, I can't see. Um I know I spoke with Greg Roberts about this earlier, but this says Karen or Greg. Is anyone here to provide us with some more information?
Yes, Madam Chair. I can start off and Greg can um uh take it from there, but we this is a joint project between the Finance Department and the Street Maintenance Department. We published an RFP, and I've got the key points listed on my memo on February twenty eighth. The bit uh we ran that for thirty days. They were due March thirtieth. We did receive six bids. We are, uh the project manager Greg Roberts is not recommending going with the lowest bidder. We did have an incomplete package. So Bartow Paving is the second lowest uh bid, and that is the recommendation this evening.
Um Greg, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Um just only that this is a wrap-up of the Elmeig twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, and this is a completion of both courthouse square east and courthouse square west and all of Spring Street from Club Drive all the way to um Grady Street.
Thank you for that. Um let's see if questions. Um Madam Mayor, any questions or comments for us?
No, ma'am. I don't have any. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions or comments at this time.
All right, thank you. Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that I'm very thankful and hopeful now that we will get Spring Street repaved. It has been in need of it for some time, and I'm glad to see uh that coming to fruition. Thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dr. Burdanyly?
Thank you, um Councilwoman Miller. No, ma'am. I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Coach Watts?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Howard Estes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions.
All right, and Councilman Sam Davis?
No question. Thank you.
All right. Well, guys, um being it, there's no concerns, can we go ahead and place this on the consent agenda? Yeah, all right. Thank you. Moving along. Um next, we have to authorize the mayor to sign a construction contract with Garland DBS for the Douglasville Wellness Center roofing um and wall restoration project. Greg, are you here with us?
Yes, this is the uh building. Most of us affectionately know it as the former Harbaugh. It is now the city's Wellness Center, and it sits uh at six-six-nine-seven Church Street uh between City Hall and the City Hall Annex. And this um this project will will be completely like the project we did about three years ago for City Hall for the council members that were on at that time, where uh we did the exterior seal coat and paint, and then we did roof work for City Hall. We're doing the exact same work for this building and the same company. Garland um is a company that operates under the US Communities, and that allowed them to put the program together for us uh for this uh uh for this facility and another one on the next uh agenda item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Um moving on. Madam Mayor, any questions or comments for us?
No, ma'am. Thank you so much, Mr. Greg.
Thank you.
And Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller?
No questions or comments at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Adams?
No comment or question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Dr. Burdanyly?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Coach Watts?
No questions, Madam Chair.
And Councilman Howard Estes?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And Councilman Sam Davis?
No questions at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no concerns, again, can we place this on the consent agenda? See nods. Yes. All right. Thanks, guys. Moving along, we've got to, item C, to authorize mayor to sign a construction agreement with Garland DBS for the West Courthouse Square project.
Yes, our Greg Roberts Public Services Department again. Um and this is for our renovated uh facility at eighty-four eighty-five Courthouse Square West. For many of us, it's been around Douglasville for at least thirty or forty years or more. Uh it's former City Hall. If you've been around longer than, longer than that, you might know it as the old Douglas County Electric Membership Corporation Building. Um so the building is about eight years, eighty years old, and our renovations are almost one hundred percent complete, minus getting the street paved and getting this exterior paint and seal. And Garland uh DBS will be doing this uh facility as well, doing a seal coat and a paint. And um hopefully, they're ready to go with both of these projects with council approval. Hopefully, we'll have this completed in about three, less than four weeks.
Now, when you say three to four weeks, is that both projects?
Yes, because it's it's three different contractors working on two buildings.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Um Madam Mayor, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, ma'am. I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller?
No questions or comments at this time, Madam Chair.
All right. Councilman Adams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Mr. Roberts, I had a question. I'm not able to pull up the item on a PDF with the screen sharing. It it may be my inability, and it may be something in the PDF. I'm not sure, but it says uh West Courthouse Square Wall Project. And so does that, is that the reason that we have no exterior coating on the brick of the building now? Is that what part of Garland's um contract is for, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh when we started this renovation project, going in, we had hoped to pull off the old um brickwork facade that had been placed on the building. Um we we had hoped to salvage that yellow brick that you see on it that would have been installed on that building around nineteen forty. I'm not sure the exact year. It's about eighty years old. And when we pulled the front side off, we had two different contractors uh tell us that they were unable to to restore that original brick um because of some things that were done to it at some point in time. I'm not sure if it was before the city owned the building or uh I'm I'm just not sure who was responsible for the brick facade. But anyway, long story short, um once Ray Lynn had pulled that exterior off during the demolition, we realized that we were going to have to seal coat and paint that facility, so that's what we're going to do.
Okay, that that talking, actually, noticed that that part of it looked to be incomplete, and I assumed that was that was the process. Thank you so much, uh Madam Chair. That's all that I have. Thank you, uh Mr.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Cut on mute.
There we, thanks, guys. Um try that again. Councilwoman Dr. Burdanyly? Did you have any questions or concerns for us?
No, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, ma'am.
Councilman Coach Watts?
You're welcome.
No, uh, no questions. I'll just make a uh uh observation comment here. I'm I'm hoping in when it's done in three to four weeks, we'll be able to practice social distancing and maybe cut a ribbon.
Ooh.
What?
I look forward to it.
Ribbon.
We may have to wait till later in the summer to do that based on um, based on the social distancing.
Thank you.
No questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Councilman Sam Davis?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys. Next, I'm gonna lose count here. We have to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Garland Services for Pest Control Service at the city's Cedar Mountain Road facility. And Mr. Greg Roberts, you still there?
Yes, ma'am. So uh not to confuse all the Garland talk tonight, this is a completely different company. Garland Services is a local pest control uh company, and they have some specialties in dealing with wildlife and and larger varmints than most of us deal with uh at our homes. And so when you're in the garbage business, you have to have this area covered. There are certain requirements from state law, so the the amount of this agreement with Garland is is less than three thousand dollars. But because it requires a signed agreement, that's the reason it's on here. This is similar to what we have done in the past at Club Drive, but uh the facility being larger at Cedar Mountain um requires us to do some things just a little different. And um so we should be good to go with this agreement and keep those varmints under control.
Let's keep those guys on. Thank you. Um Madam Mayor, any questions or concerns for us?
No, ma'am. Mr. Greg said varmints. That's all.
That's right.
Keep them out. Oh, my goodness. Uh Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller?
My only question would be to the attorney, do we need to retitle this contract Varmint Control instead of Pest Control? If that's a legal term or not. Uh no additional questions.
I'm asking, Council, I guess. All right. Councilman Adams?
No comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No. Councilwoman Dr. Burdanyly? Councilwoman? Um we can come back. Councilman Coach Watts?
Um I'm just fine with varmint. We can, we can change that if you want. And uh one, one thing, uh did, the previous item, did you put that on consent agenda? I remember you saying that. I don't know if you did or not.
Yes, we did.
Okay, good deal. Uh no other question?
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Howard Estes?
Uh no questions or comments at this time, even about varmints.
No. Councilman Sam Davis?
Uh one question. What are the uh, what are the, the price of the agreement with the Garland Services?
It's uh for this agreement right here, it is two thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for an annual agreement for the pest control at Cedar Mountain property.
Is that a year?
That's, yes, it's for, yes, that's for a twelve That's, yes, it's for, yes, that's for a twelve month agreement where they come out once a month, check all the stations and clear them out and rebate them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yep, so the mayor signed an agreement, right?
If we don't want any varmints over there, yes. Gotta keep those varmints out. Um, Councilman Dr. Burdanyly? Did you have any questions or comments?
No, no ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you.
I'm here, no question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can only see like four faces down here. I'm seeing everybody. Uh, um, if there are no other questions or concerns being being as how we don't want the varmints, um, I asked that we go ahead and put this on the consent agenda? Are you guys good with that? Yeah, all right, perfect. Thank you. Moving along, uh, next we have to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Siemens Industry for Fire Safety Services at the city's Downtown Conference Center. Ms. Jennifer Johnson, are you here with us?
Yep, I'm here. Good evening, Jennifer Johnson, sixty-seven hundred Church Street. Um, this agreement is the annual service agreement for the fire alarm system here at the conference center, which covers the, you know, the alarm system, the sprinklers, inspections, um, it's a yearly renewal with a automatic auto renewal um, for three years. So, um, right now it is up for renewal and, um, like I said, it just covers everything here at the conference center. And, um, Siemens is the company that we've had originally, um, for the conference center.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Jennifer. Madam Mayor, any questions for us?
I don't have any, thank you, Ms. Jennifer.
And Mayor Pro Tim, Terry Miller?
No questions or comments at this time, Madam Chair.
Councilman Adams?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Dr. Burdanyly?
No ma'am, thank you.
No, thank you. Councilman Coach Watts?
Yes, uh, you said yearly renewal. At what point will it be automatically renewed for three years or when will that happen?
So it'll, um, it's, so it's yearly, we'll sign it and then, um, each year it automatically renew. And at the end of the three years, we'll go in front of y'all again to, um, renew it. So, uh,
Okay, I got it. That, I, I didn't understand that part. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Howard Estes?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Councilman Sam Davis?
No questions at this time, thank you.
All right, thanks guys. Well guys, if there are no other questions or comments, concerns, are you guys okay with putting this one on the consent agenda as well? Let's see some yeses.
Yes.
Thank you guys. All right. And lastly, we have to authorize the mayor to sign sixteen lighting service agreements with Georgia Power for LED lighting upgrades at various street locations around the city. Mr. Greg Roberts? You still with us?
Yes. Yes, this is Greg Roberts and this is a Georgia Power lighting. So for some of the council members that remember about three or four years ago, time flies when you're having fun. But we did an LED upgrade for the overwhelming majority of the city. Um, and so one of the things that was, uh, uh, and I didn't even realize that Georgia Power handled it with different divisions. So there's a number of areas around the city where there were just standalone lights that did not get changed in this upgrade. For example, the Arbor Station subdivision did get changed back, uh, three or four years ago. Um, places like Hunter's Ridge, some of those larger subdivisions did get changed. But what didn't happen were places like Hunter Park, our property here at Cedar Mountain, excuse me, uh, Club Drive, Jesse Davis Park, some of those city-owned places and some of those streets where there was just a few lights. And then the larger of those that were non-city properties, uh, so to speak, was Douglas Boulevard. Uh, there, there's a total of about a hundred and sixty-five light fixtures in this, uh, switching these over to LED. There is not, um, there is not a significant price increase. The only increase at all is on Douglas Boulevard and it's a very small increase because we're having to go up and, uh, I'm gonna date myself, but I'm gonna say wattage. I know that's not right, but um, the, the wattage of lights that are currently on Douglas Boulevard, the LEDs that will replace those is a much, uh, higher lumen. And so, um, it is at a different price. And so the total of this is about five thousand dollars per month. But that's not really an increase. I'm just letting you know that's what these items total up to per month. Um, and as, um, as we looked at the budget the other day, you know, our annual electricity bill is about just under six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so, uh, this is a small portion of that. But this will get all of our lights that are on Georgia Power converted to LED.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that, Mr. Roberts. Madam Mayor, did you have any questions or concerns on this?
Um, no, I'll just hold. I'm excited to try to keep moving forward with LED lighting. I just know we had some issues with them in the past, uh, with Georgia Power and, and putting those lights in. So I'm excited to see that they're moving forward. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, Terry Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a quick question for Greg. Um, these fixtures, these are just simply the fixtures themselves that are being, uh, traded out. Is that correct? Not the mounting or the poles or anything else?
I can't specifically say that's correct on all of these because I know the ones on Douglas Boulevard will be a complete replacement. Um, now, whether some of these fixtures will attach to the, to the current mounting brackets, um, I, I, I cannot answer that. I could get with Brandon Jenkins and he could let us know, but, um,
When you say Douglas Boulevard, what stretch, which specific stretch of Douglas Boulevard are you referring to?
From, um, Chapel Hill Road back toward Highway five, that general area. There's forty.
Okay.
There's, um, I believe there's forty-six lights just on that stretch of Douglas Boulevard that are Georgia Power lights.
Does the city have any say in the selection of the poles themselves? Or is that exclusively the, the realm of Georgia Power? The reason I ask is, you know, we're, we're about to make some significant upgrades not too distant future to, to Douglas Boulevard to improve it, uh, to give it, if we can live up to the name Boulevard. And, and it would be nice to have the opportunity to if we're upgrading the fixtures from a functional standpoint, it'd be nice to upgrade them from an aesthetic standpoint as well.
Well, and I will say that these are those big lights that are really high up on the poles. So they, um, they currently do not have necessarily a beauty effect.
That's for sure.
And so, um, tho- those, these are strictly for lighting that roadway. So we can certainly talk about that, Councilman Miller.
Okay. It'll be interesting to know if we have, if we, if we can have any kind of input in that. It'll be nice. I, I know cost obviously is an issue, but if we can find something that looks a little better than what's out there for, you know, something that's close in, in the same, in the same price range, it'd be nice to, to investigate. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment concerning Mayor Pro Tim and Mr. Roberts' conversation. I would imagine that they would be more than happy to replace those poles for us at a price uh, to update. But, uh, I am glad to see that we're getting the, the lighting updated now that we have the roads repaved or the beautification going on. Thank you all. That's all.
You too. Thank you. Councilman Dr. Burdanyly, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. A quick look, I was looking at the attach, thank you, uh, Mr. Roberts. I noticed that, uh, you mentioned that we're switching out the LED lights, which is awesome. And I was looking at the attachments and on the application, it gives specifically the street names. I see a lot of on Club Drive and Chase, Parker, um, Douglas Manor and even this Boulevard. When will you assess additional, um, streets that need to be checked out? You know about how many we still have?
Um, anything that's on Greystone would still need to be done. We've not had uh, any requests from Greystone to do an upgrade. I'm not sure what their status is. So we do have some areas of town that have Greystone lighting um, in, in various areas. Um, I would have to check into that. Um, this will just about get us on the Georgia Power system. I, I believe this will get us pretty much up to date with LED lighting. Um, now I would have to, uh, check out on the Thornton Road area. I'm not sure if Greystone has priority out there or Georgia Power on some of those areas where we have residents in those areas.
Okay, and thank you. The screen froze a little bit and I can get with you afterward. But, um, I was concerned about Cave Springs Road. Are we in? Cause I know I get, that's about, um, the most calls that I receive. And I know that we share um, Douglas County on that street as well. But are we pretty good on that side now?
So Cave Springs in particular is Greystone. Um, now, I haven't heard anything from that area in, in recent times. But I, I believe Greystone got us repaired on a couple of those issues, but, uh, and I am basing that on the fact that they had, uh, installed at least one or two lights over there. And I've not heard anything new. I, I can get with Ms. Hampton and see if she's got any new information.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you guys. Councilman Coach Watts, do you have any questions, comments for us?
Uh, no ma'am, not at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Councilman Howard Estes?
No questions or comments at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Councilman Sam Davis?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. I'd like to go right through A through F. And it states that the mayor, will the city manager be able to sign those contracts if the mayor out of town? Since we gave her authority to change your authority to sign?
That's part of what we vote on Monday. Um, I don't know, do we need? Susan Littlefield, are you still here with us? Is that what we're voting on Monday?
Um, this probably is not one that, that the city manager could sign, although I would have to look at it. Uh, the reason is that it's, it's open-ended as regarding the amount and she's limited to twenty-five thousand, even after you vote on Monday. Uh, these, these go on indefinitely for years and therefore can exceed the twenty-five thousand. There are some that are on your agenda tonight that the city manager will be able to sign in the future. Uh, if you, if you pass all the ordinances though.
Thank you very much. Um, is it okay then to assume that if we approve this on Monday, that, um, our Madam Mayor will be here in town to sign off on this, I think?
But most contracts, most contracts can be signed, uh, with an electronic signature now. Uh, there are a few that cannot, but this one is one that can, can be signed. So if she can sign, uh, from a distance, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Councilman Davis, does that help?
Yep, thank you.
Well guys, if there are no other questions or comments, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda also? Yeah, I think so. Okay, perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. Um, it's just FYI, if you wanna see different faces while they're speaking, you can swipe, uh, your phone to the left, I think. And then it'll take you to, it'll still be four people, but they'll change. You will stay the same and three others will change so that you can see who's speaking. Uh, I know Mr. Cartwright has come on and some other staff, so you can see them. Um, and that way, Councilmember Miller. And Councilman Davis, you, am I going somewhere? You taking me to a trip or somewhere? I'm gonna be here Monday, Lord willing, the creek don't rise in the, uh,
No, just in case you're out of town and have a backup.
It's a travel ban.
If you're going out of town, I'm going to. I'm ready to go.
I know.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll move on now to item twelve, which is Public Relations Committee and that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
The Public Relations Committee has no new business for this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Take it away for Public Safety Committee. You have several items.
Yes, ma'am, I have, I have some. Okay. Item A is hold a public hearing. Who considers requests for alcoholic beverage license for the on-premise sale and consumption of wine and malt beverages, spirit, liquor at the following establishment. Licensed Tito Lounge, LLC, DBA, Tito Lounge. Location, one, two, three, five, three, Beverly Memorial Highway, proposed agent outlet manager, McKenna, Marie, Raggedale, and required fees have been paid into the finance department. Will the applicant please come down?
I am here.
You're here? For those that don't know, the Tito Lounge is the old location for the Western Off-Tow. So how you doing this afternoon?
I'm doing good. How are you?
I'm fine. Are you staying in?
I'm staying in. I'm socially distancing.
Okay, good. Uh, this afternoon, well, tonight, the council, we gonna hold a public hearing and, uh, and, and the public hearing gonna be five minutes. Five minutes for those who are and five minutes for those who against. And at this time, we're going to hold a virtual public hearing for five minutes for those who wanna speak against Tito's Lounge. And five minutes for those who wanna speak for. So right now, the public hearing is on for those who are against. Five minutes.
Mr. Chair, this is Chelsea Jackson. We don't have anyone signed up to speak against. We only have Ms. Raggedale here to speak for. And if she could please state her first and last name and her address for the record and then proceed with her comment.
Thank you.
My name is LaShawna, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you good.
Mm-hmm. Name is LaShawna Raggedale and business location, one, two, three, five, three, Veterans Memorial Highway, Douglasville, Georgia.
Thank you. We see I had to go by, by the books, uh, five minutes. And, uh, for five minutes against, and we have nobody to sign up against. And, uh, no one to sign up for. And, uh, council members, y'all still here? Madam Mayor, smile and go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Well, I do for, uh, Deputy Chief. This is new. Do we have any concerns or issues at this site?
No ma'am, we don't. I'm not aware of anything that would cause any problems.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Davis.
Yes, ma'am. This is a new business since, uh, let the council member know. Since we lost one restaurant and we gained one. We lost the Irish pub, now we gaining a, a, uh, restaurant. So any council members, go ahead, bow.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mark Adams here. Uh, Ms. Raggedale, just curious about your experience, uh, in the restaurant and alcohol sales, more than restaurant business. Uh, can you tell me a little bit about your previous experience, if any?
Um, I, this is a brand new, um, establishment for my husband and I. I don't have any experience in, um, hospitality services, restaurant or um, bar management. But I have supervised, in my career as a nurse, I have supervised other, um, uh, workers and I am familiar with, um, supervision of, of staff.
Okay, the reason for my question, your answer then brings on another question. Uh, how have you then, uh, been trained or are training your staff and yourself as far as the sale of alcoholic beverages?
I have taken, in December, I've taken the Safe Serve certification for alcohol and I've also taken the Safe Serve certification and received those certifications for, um, restaurant and food management. And we will also require that any employee that comes, um, as a bartender and also for food services, um, maintain and obtain a Safe Serve certification as well to safely pour and handle food.
Thank you very much. We look forward, uh, if approved, we look forward to you being there. Glad to see uh, our spaces in the downtown area being, uh, used and, and improved. Thank you so much. That's all that I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, sir. Any other? Yes, yes, sir. Any other, the council members, come on. No other council members? Madam Mayor, I guess you'd be the last one, Madam Mayor. Nobody's, are they all muted?
No, we're excited to see it coming, to something moving in that area, so.
I am excited. The Western Offto sign will still be up there. So we good. Miss McKenna, we appreciate you all coming to Douglasville with your business and looking forward to your menu. When is the plans to be opened?
We're hoping to open the first or second week in June and we're excited to open as well and look forward to it.
Okay, thank you. If you come back, if there are no other questions, if you come back on Monday, or not come back, if you tune in, same time, same place on Mondays and we'll go at it again, give you a ask, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item B, hold a public hearing to consider a request for the change in agent outlet manager and transfer of the alcohol beverage license for the on premises sale and consumption of wine and malt beverages and spirit liquor at the following establishment. Current licensed company LLC. Proposed licensing, Lady piece of rear LLC DB8. Johnny's New York Style Pizza, location 2911 Chapel Hill Road, number 255. Current agent outlet manager, Ellen Carson. Proposed agent outlet manager, Parcour Patel. And the required fees have been paid into the finance department. Will Mr. Patel please come online?
Good evening.
How you doing this afternoon?
Pretty good, and you?
I'm fine. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Pratik Kumar Patel. And the address is 2911 Chapel Hill Road, Unit 255, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Okay, thank you. At this time, like we do all afternoon, we have to hold a public hearing. And we like to give five minutes for those who like to speak against and five minutes for those who like to speak for the applicant. So right now, we're going into the five minutes for those that are speaking against, if we have anybody signed up.
Mr. Chair, this is Chelsea Jackson. No, sir, no one has signed up to speak against applicant.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone sign up to speak for the applicant?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council members. Start off with Councilman Adam, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions concerning the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Patel, are you going to change the menu or keep it the same? That's one of my family's restaurants, Johnny New York Style Pizza and their salads. So are you keeping the same products?
Yes, ma'am. We are keeping the same product, same employees and same recipe as always been. And we are trying our hard to also keep it maintained.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Patel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not a problem.
Councilman Terry Miller?
No questions or comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Councilwoman Nicole?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Councilman Watts?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Estes?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Councilman Adams?
I had no further questions. Mr. Davis had already spoken. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for just just a change in agent outlet manager. And I'm sure, yeah, outlet manager knows what requirements is. So come back on Monday, same time, same station, and we'll give you ask, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Going on to C, hold a public hearing to consider request for a change in agent outlet manager to transfer of the alcoholic beverage license for the on premises sale and consumption of wine and malt beverages and the spirit liquor at the following establishment. Current license? That lost me. OEM she, excuse me if I mispronounced, N H L L C. Proposed license, Sheeran Bond, DB8 Cave Spring Packing. Location 913 Dallas Highway. Current agent outlet manager, Amira Patel. And proposed agent outlet manager, Poonam Patel. The required fees have been paid into the finance department. But Mr. Patel, will you please come down? State your name.
Yes. This is Ms. Patel, Poonam Patel.
How are you this afternoon?
I'm good. How about you, sir?
I need your name and address for the records.
Okay, Poonam Patel. Address is 913 Dallas Highway, Douglasville, Georgia.
Okay, and at the same time, you want to change in request in the outlet manager? And we have to hold a five-minute public hearing for those who speak far and for those who speak against. And Ms. Chelsea, do we have anyone to speak against this establishment?
No, sir. There is no one here to speak for or against the establishment or the hearing.
Okay, so we hold a public hearing for and against five minutes? So since there are no takers and there are any questions from the council members about changing the outlet management?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief, any issues with this location?
No, sir. I'm not aware of any that we've had there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patel, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Come back, same, tune in same time, same station on Monday. And thank you all for doing a great job in our community, Ward Three.
Thank you. I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. And the last one, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for housing of city prisoners at the Douglas County Jail. Deputy Chief Shaw, come on in.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sue Ann Shaw. I'm the Deputy Chief of the Douglasville Police Department, 2083 Fairburn Road. And this agreement is an agreement between the City of Douglasville and the Board of Commissioners for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to house city prisoners at the county jail. It is a two-year agreement. We are finishing up a two-year agreement right now. And it is the same agreement, the change in it is a four-cent rate increase on the daily amount that we pay for routine non-emergency care for the prisoners. We would still pay the same amount per day per prisoner that we pay now, the $35 flat rate. But the only increase is the four percent on the routine non-emergency care.
Okay. Any council members have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mark Adams here. Deputy Chief Shaw, then the only change is going up four cents per day for emergency care for dental and medical? Non-emergency care, I'm sorry?
Routine non-emergency care, yes, sir.
So the daily rate on the prisoner after a two-year contract is going to remain the same for two more years?
Yes, sir. We pay a $35 per prisoner per day. Yes, sir. So it will stay the same. And the only change is that four cent.
Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Mayor?
I do have a question, Councilman Davis. It has on here Deputy Chief about payment and add-ons for the city of 10% penalties and all of that. What is all this talking about?
The percentages there are coming off of fines through the court that are paid to the county.
That is... Okay, so we don't have to...
I'm sorry.
Do we incur these costs? Do we incur these costs or this is what our $35 covers all of this?
Our $35 and the routine non-emergency care cost are what we pay the jail to house the prisoners. And these other percentages come through the fines in the courts when the person...
Okay, so that's separate?
Yes, ma'am.
But it's all in the same contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. If we have no other question, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. Okay, thank you all. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. We'll move on to item 14, which is Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item, item 20-214, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between owner and architect with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood Inc. for services on Jesse Davis Park Improvement Project. And it looks like, Ms. Jackson, are you gonna be the one talking about this or is it Mr. Landry?
We have Ms. Amy Bell from GMC here to speak regarding the services. But we also have Mr. Travis Landrum who will speak following Ms. Amy Bell. So I'm just verifying that Ms. Amy Bell can hear me.
I can, yes, ma'am.
Please state your first and last name and your address for the record and then you can proceed with your comment.
Oh, thank you. So my name is Amy Bell. I'm the Vice President of Goodwin Mills and Kaywood Architectural Division. We are located in Atlanta at 6120 Powers Ferry Road Northwest.
Ms. Chelsea, are you gonna be running this or?
We'll have Mr. Landrum explain the agreement as well as Ms. Bell explain.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you, Coach Watts. So we turned in a proposal and a contract, which is a phased approach. We have Phase One, Phase Two and Phase Three, which is going to give the city the ability to be able to do the adjustments as they would like. So Phase One is proposed to be the gymnasium and all of the site work at Jesse Davis Park. And then Phase Two, we're going to be facing in the community center and then face, or excuse me, senior center. And then the Phase Three is the community center. So we structured the contract in ways that gives the city flexibility to do either all three of those projects together or one at a time, which we have assumed through conversations with Travis and others that we would tackle the gym and all of the entire site at first.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Mr. Landrum?
Yes, sir. Travis Landrum, 8830 Girly Road, Douglasville, Georgia. As Ms. Bell explained, this is the presentation that was shared with Mayor and Council at the retreat. And to her point is definitely highlighting the gymnasium as a preference first and just wanted to present the contract and field any questions and concerns that Mayor and Council may have.
Okay, we'll go around the horn real quick. Councilman Adams?
I have no questions at this time concerning this item. Thank you, Coach Watts.
Madam Mayor?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Coach.
Dr. Burdanyly?
Thank, no questions.
Thank you, Dr. Burdanyly. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of items I wanted to discuss. I took a deep dive into the contract, well, because that's me. And a couple of issues that I kind of spotted. One was on the contracted amount of compensation. It's broken into three phases and there's a percentage of the cost of construction under each. It ranges from 7.5% to 8.9% of the cost of construction, which that's medium to above average, which is not, I don't have a big problem with. But my concern was that it's based on the total cost of construction, which includes the site work. And typically, architects will charge a percentage of the cost of construction based on the cost of the building, not including the site work. And in this particular case, also, they have additional services that they're charging for the site work design. So they have additional services for civil engineering and for landscape architecture. So we're being charged for those separately, which is fine if they're providing that service. But I was concerned over the cost of the percentage based on the overall cost of construction, including the site work. That's one item. The other one was further in the contract, the under responsibilities and deliverables. The city is not getting a BIM model, which is the 3D model that architects do now that enables you to design and understand the building. And it's very helpful if, for a lot of higher end clients, if you turn those over at the end, the architect will still retain ownership of the model, the design. But it's good for the entity like a city or major building management company to have that in order to manage the building or to help it with issues in the future. So those are two issues that I wanted to bring to the forefront.
Sure. Mayor, may I ask a question on the BIM model that you're referring to? What level of BIM model would you like to see or are you considering?
Well, I think as designed, I know you distinguish between as designed and as constructed. I understand you can't provide, you can't be responsible for the as constructed unless you can get the contractor on board to mess with it. But certainly at the, as designed, the model would be handy to have.
Sure, we have no issues looking through that.
Okay, good. And I think as far as the contract amount, I think that's something that I think staff would be best to take up and discuss that in some level of detail. It may, it may be require a little more conversation than what we're capable of doing here now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Did you have anything else?
No, that's all I have for now. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
And Councilman Davis?
I'm fine. I guess I think...
Did I hit everybody?
You missed me, but I'm good.
I, oh, Mr. Estes. Okay, I was, I thought I was one short, but I couldn't remember.
Yeah. Yeah, Councilwoman Burdanyly, I don't have any questions and I apologize. It's just the sound keeps freezing.
That's okay. Well, if there are no other questions or concerns, Mayor Pro Tim, do you feel comfortable placing this on the consent agenda based on your?
I think I'd like us to vote on them, just to give staff a chance to discuss the contract issue between now and then. I'm not, I don't have major issues with the contract. But I'd like them just to clean that up a little bit.
Okay, all right. Sounds reasonable to me. Madam Mayor, that's the only item I had tonight under Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Chairman Watts. We'll move on to Technology Committee, that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanyly. Maybe having audio concerns. But there isn't any other business, there is no business under that committee. So we'll move on to other businesses. Is there any other business from council members to bring up at this time? I see you, Dr. Burdanyly. You're trying to come in. Okay, we'll move on then to our updates from city staff, our city attorney.
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry. Yes, Sam is here. He's checking my iPad. There are no items under transportation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Burdanyly. Updates from city staff. Do we have an update from the city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson?
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dotson. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Bam. Our Chief of Police, the Police Department, Deputy Chief Sue Ann Shaw.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. And our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just to advise you all, in lieu of your 5:00 PM committee meetings that we typically have, we're gonna have a series of staff reports from various department directors detailing how we plan on operating during the COVID-19 crisis. When we look to open next week, it's gonna be an opening that we're gonna take the stance that this is how we're gonna be operating for the foreseeable future and make adjustments over time. Our opening will be very minimal. The purpose of the opening would be to make certain that as best as possible, all services that are necessary for the public would be open. all services that are, uh, necessary for the public would be open, uh, to the public. But keeping in mind of making certain that we not only keep our staff members safe, but as well as the citizens safe as well. So really, there'll be limited access, but there will be access. Uh, we will continue to advise the public that the best way to contact us will be electronically, if that is available to them. However, if it's not available to them, we understand, we want to make certain that we're open for that. Um, as well as, um, they'll detail to use some of, um, the activities that we can do and some of the activities that we won't be able to do. Um, I did send you all over a, a new, um, update from the governor's order today. Um, he did, uh, continue the shelter in place for those, um, who have underlying conditions, as well as those who are elderly, that is extended, uh, through June twelfth, I believe. So you all should have a copy of that in your email. Um, but those businesses that he stated to be open, uh, this week are open. Uh, they're moving forward. Uh, we are getting word that Arbor Place Mall will be looking to open fairly soon. Uh, so our law enforcement officers, as well as code compliance, are all, uh, working with those individuals to provide, um, not only education, but safety measures as people, uh, venture out and get to things that they feel that they need, um, that are essential. Uh, the other is, um, as we look to open up business, we need for you all to consider and think about when you want to begin to gather together again. Um, under the governor's order, you can meet this way. So that means you can meet through June. I sent you all an email, uh, that we would try to gather again and start meeting how we had at the last meeting when you all were together, where we were practicing social distancing. Um, and, uh, we were limiting people who were coming in the room. Um, I will tell you that it's a mixed bag of how other governments are operating. Uh, some have never gone to virtual meetings, some do a combination thereof. Um, but most people are moving back into meeting, uh, together. Uh, so that's the con, that's the talk amongst local governments. When that's happening, um, there's various times. But most folks are starting that process in the month of May, trying to make certain that they're in place and have a system and a protocol that they can live with for the foreseeable future, understanding that, uh, there'll be changes that we have to, um, deal with as time comes. I've heard, um, mixed discussion. Some of you are ready to start now. Uh, some of you would rather wait until later. Uh, the mayor has mentioned, uh, when she would like to meet, and I'll let her address that. Uh, we don't necessarily have to have an answer now, but I would like for you all to, uh, give us some guidance. Um, because as well as, um, we're able to do this, as you know, there's a lot of work that goes on the back end to making certain that the, the meeting process virtually is as seamless as possible. Um, and we want to make certain that we are making our best effort to make certain that you all are doing the business of the city in the best way that we can. Uh, but we do have some time to make those decisions, but I will ask for you to give that some thought, um, so that we can be prepared for that. And then, um, the only other thing, uh, that I will add is that I did send out notice, uh, to you all that we were working, uh, with staff, that we would, um, not have any events where we're promoting gathering through the month of September. Um, based on the governor's orders, I think that is the right thing to do. If we need to make adjustments, we will make adjustments. Um, that will be inclusive of big activities like July fourth, um, and Wednesday wind down. Um, you still have the issue of the fireworks. Um, some cities are having those discussions now. Uh, that leads to things like, they will do the fireworks and they will just have people sit in cars. Or they're saying, we're not going to do the fireworks at all, and we're going to move them to another holiday possibly in the fall. But I do suspect that we're going to be getting calls from the company asking us to make decisions about that. So, um, we feel we're in a good place for the next thirty days, um, but we will make adjustments as we need to. Um, just very similar to what we mentioned to you all from the budget on Tuesday. Uh, we are managing every day through the changes that we're given, but making certain in the same vein that we're make, that we're providing the best services that we can, uh, to the public and getting you all what you need as you communicate with the citizens, um, of Douglasville. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much, City Manager. Um, staff report, so, uh, City Manager, uh, mentioned the mall is going to open. Um, I did get a phone call from the mall manager, and he said Arbor Place was going to open on Friday with limited hours of operation from eleven to seven. And then on Sundays, I think, uh, twelve to four, but he will give all the specifics to Mr. Post, our Communications Director. Um, he did say that, um, I think there are ninety stores in the mall, ten indicated that they would open. So, uh, and the national chains are making their own decision. Uh, Macy's will make an, uh, an announcement at the beginning of next week to say when their Macy's stores will open. Dillard's, um, J C Penney, and, uh, Belkin, some other stores that, so the major chains are making their determination. Not just Arbor Place, but C B L has two malls in the area that they're opening. And Simon's, of course, has, I think, nine or ten, uh, Lenox Square, Town Center. So all of the Simon's, uh, chains are opening. Uh, the mall manager did tell me at Arbor Place that although Regal Theater can open, they have, uh, decided not to open at this time. So they, uh, are making plans to see if they can do, uh, meet the governor's order and do social distancing. But they have, um, made the decision not to open the movie theater. Um, he did say that the, um, Food Court will do what they had done at the, the big, the end of the beginning of social, uh, social distancing. I don't even know how to explain that. But they will, the Food Court will be closed to sit down dining, even though they have their chairs at six feet apart and ten people or less around the table. They have decided to just do takeout only. So there, uh, they are not doing, uh, food tasting, and they will not have anyone sitting at the mall. So this and more information will be given to, um, Mr. Post, and he will do a press release for the city, but those are the details that I have currently. Um, in addition to when they, when you come in the mall, they want you to have a mask on. And so I think they'll have mall security at the entrances to encourage people to wear masks. And some stores will have, um, have you take your temperature when you go in, and they're going to, of course, try to take, have less than ten people. But in those major chains, uh, they're going to do their own security, and each floor will have ten people or less. So I don't know how everything's going to work out, but those are some of the details that we talked about. And I'm certain he'll give more information to Jason. So now we'll move on to staff reports. The first one is a staff report regarding CARES Act Letter of Support for COVID nineteen Assistance. And Ms. Emily Hardaway will, um, do that, and that's under the Finance Committee Chairman. I apologize, Mr. Chair, I read your item, but it's Finance Chair, Mr. Adams, Councilman Adams.
No problem. Uh, Madam Mayor, just go forward. It'll be fine.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here to discuss the CARES Act, a letter of support, and two different grant opportunities, um, that we are currently trying to pursue. Um, first, G M A emailed us about the extension of the CARES Act that's currently being discussed in Congress. Um, this extension would help provide assistance to local governments across the country, and it would allow local governments to recoup lost revenue. Uh, G M A would like for the mayor to sign a letter of support for this bill to send to Congress. Um, and so if you all would like for the mayor to sign this letter of support, then we can draft it, uh, once we receive more details, um, from G M A.
One thing that I'll add, um, Mr. Chairman and Madam Mayor and members of, uh, the council, is that this is another thing that consistently changes, um, as time goes on. Emily has, uh, been deemed the person who is gathering information for all of the grant opportunities that we may be able to seek for funding. Um, right now, everything has to be related to a COVID expense. So it means that things such as P P E, um, they are going back and forth on the issue of hazardous pay. Um, but it has to be a direct relation to an expense that the city had, uh, incurred based on COVID. Um, there is question right now and additional conversation around possibility of funding in Congress to help local governments and with lost revenue. Um, there was a call today, um, that G M A hosted, um, talking with the Department of Revenue and some of the other finance folks about some of the revenue shortfalls and a variety of other things that other, uh, local jurisdictions were having, and, and we're very similar, the same. I, I would actually say to you all that we're probably ahead of them, to be honest, where many, uh, local governments are. And it's because we've started our budget, uh, process as soon as we did. Um, and I will tell you that it was stated today, as I've continued to say, that because a lot of your revenue won't be realized for, um, another year, you're looking at two years. So these are, these would be grants also looking for, how do you, will you be managing in the future? So we know social distancing will be a part of our life for a time to come. So how are we setting up our operations and our facilities, uh, to handle social distancing, not only today, but moving forward in the future? So we've encouraged our staff members to work with Emily to do that, um, so that we can put our best foot forward and be able to seek the funding. There's a lot of funding available, but there is not a lot of conversation going around about some creative ideas and abilities to help local jurisdictions deal with the future of a current COVID or post-COVID operation. So that's where many communities are struggling, because you're handling your day-to-day crisis, and it's hard to look beyond what is happening today.
And I would also just like to add that for both of the grant opportunities, um, through FEMA and the Department of Justice, that we will not have to do a match or pay anything back for the grant. So there would be no cost on our end.
Thank you, Ms. Hardaway. Um, thank you, Ms. Hampton, for that update. It sounds as though it, it will be a long process, a time-consuming process, one that will, as you said, continue to, to change as we continue to move through this time, uh, and try to even decipher what is a direct cost from COVID and how we categorize that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. So we're, we're trying to put our best foot forward to come up with whatever. And if you all have suggestions, please, um, feel free to pass those on to us.
Thank you all, Ms. Hardaway, for working on that for us, uh, and on, on our behalf. I was surprised to hear that there may be some relief for the, uh, local jurisdictions and municipalities and counties. That's good news. Um, I'll just ask the general question, if there is anyone that has a comment, staff, um, um, council or Madam Mayor, please identify yourself and move forward in the essence of time. Thank you very much. That's all that we have.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. We'll move on to B, which is Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember, uh, Watts, and Councilman Watts, you have, uh, B and C under staff reports.
Yes, ma'am. You want me to just read this like I normally would?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In the committee structure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, both items I have tonight are under Personnel and Organization. Uh, item B is, uh, twenty dash one nine six, Staff Discussion Regarding Recommended Personnel Changes. Ms. Austin Bing, I'm sure, will take us where we need to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council, Tia Austin Bing, six six nine five Church Street, U M Resources. This item for you is to address our current staff stru- structure in the, uh, I T department. Um, for those of you who may know, um, Xavier Jones is a temporary, um, network, um, network, um, administrator, if I'm saying that right, in the, um, I T department. He has been with us, um, a little bit past twelve months. And, I'm sorry, he's an I T intern, pardon me, currently is his title. He's been with us a little bit past, uh, twelve months, uh, with the city of Douglasville, and we are looking to address, uh, his status, um, as relates to employment and employment opportunity with the city. Um, if you look at your attachments, uh, we have done some research and gathered, um, what the role would entail, um, as relates to, uh, our structure and needs. Uh, we are proposing, um, a Help Desk Technician, um, job description. Um, keep in mind, again, he's currently a temporary, um, intern. And so, uh, what he's doing for the I T department now, um, with our new I T manager, Sam, on board, has assessed his duties and what is needed for the department. Um, also, you will see the proposed, uh, org chart and how this position will flow. Um, if you were to click on that attachment, um, with the, uh, director position being vacant and the I T manager having two direct reports, um, I T technician and the proposed Help Desk Technician, um, job title. Um, the position, um, that we're proposing, as well as the status, would be a permanent part-time, uh, Help Desk Technician position. And so if, if it is your pleasure, we would, um, like to, uh, update our org chart and to, um, approve this part-time, uh, position for Mr. Jones, um, to be able to come on board with the seat. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Anybody that has any questions, just speak right up, identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, it's the mayor, um, Ms. Austin Bing. So part-time being how many hours a week, or is it contingent upon need? So, so our current part-time structure, um, that we've adopted in our policy is twenty-eight hour, uh, no more than twenty-eight hours would be part-time status a week. Twenty, so, also up to twenty-eight hours a week. Yes, ma'am. Uh, benefits or no benefits? No benefits. Our part-time employees, um, aren't eligible for, um, health benefits. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, anybody else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Olson Bing. Um, and I'm sure you'll have item, uh, the next item. Item C, twenty dash two zero zero, Discussion Regarding Health Insurance Broker Services for twenty twenty-one. Ms. Bing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this item before you, um, is our continued discussion, um, as it relates to, uh, how we move forward in next calendar year, twenty twenty-one, with broker services. Earlier today, uh, I did email, uh, Mayor and Council and City Manager a copy of the most recent, um, broker comparison checklist after speaking with, uh, N F P formerly Shaw Hankins, our current broker. Um, their merger, uh, provided us, um, uh, as a result of their merger, provided us with some additional information on that they wanted us to consider. Um, so this attachment that you see here, um, all of the very last column for N F P would have, uh, checks based on their information. And so that would be how they would compare, uh, with the other two, uh, potential brokers that presented, uh, information, uh, to us. Um, also, um, our current broker, N F P, um, has asked if they could provide, um, additional information, uh, in, uh, in written form to you. Obviously, we're social distancing right now. Um, but they have asked if they could provide additional information. Um, unfortunately, was not able to have it, um, today for this round. Um, but I had, uh, also advised the City Manager of their request, um, as well as Mr. Chairman. And so that is where, uh, we are. Um, if there's any direction, um, that you all would like for me to take, um, or any question that you may have for me, any direction from the City Manager, um, that is where we are, uh, as of today. And I will have that information to you as soon as I receive it. Um, they also, uh, mentioned, N F P, our current broker, that they could have it, uh, ready and prepared for your next round, um, whatever your pleasure.
Um, I, I had asked Ms. Austin Bing earlier if we wanted, if, if, if they wanted to present, uh, the way the, uh, first two brokers did, wanted, uh, retreat and one recently in a, in a meeting. And, uh, you know, right now, it would have to be Zoom. I don't know if it would be to the whole council or to that committee. Uh, Ms. Hampton, do you have any input on this?
Man, it would have to be Zoom. I, I would, I would say that, you know, um, when it comes to N F P, your current broker, I think you're, the strongest component of your relationship with the company is, um, the two Mr. Shaws. Um, not saying that N F P is, is not a good company, but I think your, your longstanding relationship is with, uh, what the company formerly known as Shaw Hankins. Um, now, what N F P brings to the table that Shaw Hankins didn't, we could either do it as a Zoom presentation that they can send to you all, or you can sit through the meeting. Uh, my assumption is, especially due to the fact that you all can't necess, you're not gathering, um, that we were just trying to limit the amount of time that you all would be meeting. So it really would be at your pleasure, how you want to receive that additional information. We will provide it to you however you would like. Uh, it could be via Zoom. Um, if you want to wait until you gather again and have them in the room, we can do that. I would advise that the longer, uh, we, we draw things out, it, it basically pushes us back a little bit. And the only other comment that I will make about N F P is, the two critical pieces that we need from a broker is that connectivity with A D P. Um, because we're doing more things in-house as it relates to benefits, that is a critical piece for us. And currently, right now, that is not a piece that we have. And currently, right now, that is not a piece that we have, and NFP is our current broker. So if that group is going to bring that to us, that needs to happen now under the current agreement. And it, and as far as I know, and Tia, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Austin Bing, correct me if I'm wrong, that is not the case.
Though those, uh, ADP, um, implementation, um, and, um, partnership has been, um, directly, uh, with ADP.
Okay, um, any, any questions or input from, uh, any of the council members?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is the mayor. Um, so Ms. Austin Bing, NFP cannot provide that link with ADP?
So they have a partnership, um, with ADP, um, at some, uh, so through their clients as well. They also have clients that have ADP. But, but the, uh, our current benefit specialist, um, that we have on, you know, on staff here in the HR Department. Has, um, all, all of her needs are, um, being filtered through the ADP relate, uh, relationship manager. So yes, they have a, they have a relationship with ADP, but we, um. We currently have, our structure is set up to where everything is in-house, as Ms. Hampton said. And so tho- that direct link would go, uh, through ADP, um, from our side. So we would like, um, you know, obviously, um, our broker relationship, however we, um, you all, you know. So choose to, uh, ensure that we, since we have an agreement with ADP. And we just signed a new agreement with them for implementation. We plan to have them, um, that we can have that, that, uh, expertise on all sides. So that's what, um, basic, uh, speaking with staff is where the need is, um, to ensure that. You know, we have that relationship from the broker side and we have it, uh, through the direct, um, connection with ADP as well. So that is a need for us to be, uh, to do, we need to do and to be successful and to use the resources that we have, um, that you all have allowed us to have. With HRIS, so. So, um, they will have more information for you. Um, I have brought that, um, cause, um, you know, that high, that focal point. As it relates to where we, what we need. Uh, we also, um, uh, spoke with, um, our current broker this week. Just to kind of dig a little bit more into, um, uh, what our service, what our needs are and what they wanted to know. That as well, and the strengths and the weaknesses, and, um, to be able to, to present some information back to you all.
It just seems that we're in a broker, uh, war. And we need to make a decision. If they're not going to give us what we want, we need to move on and get somebody that's going to do that. And just cut it and keep moving.
And I would say, Mayor, to, to address your question, probably the plainest way possible. NFP may be able to offer the services, but we're not getting them. So if we're going to stay in that relationship, then certain things need to change moving forward. And we were committed those changes in the beginning, but they have not happened.
We don't have time to wait, so we need to keep moving. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to also point out that there's, uh. A good, uh, bit of difference between the, uh, three bids, uh, and the pricing. Uh, so that's, that's a consideration also. Just one question is being, and maybe you and I have talked about this and I've forgotten. The other two companies, brokers that gave us presentations. Did, uh, did our present broker just decline to participate in that? Uh, is there a reason why they didn't?
No, sir. We, we did not go through our formal, um, uh, through a formal RFP process. We were, uh, fat, uh, gathering data, um, for you all at, at the request. But they have also, um, brought that to our attention as well and asked that. Uh, so it wasn't no, wasn't that they declined to, um, we were gathering information for you all from other brokers, um, to present to you. Um, what, um, one of the things that I also want to mention that I think, um, that is a, a need, um, to Ms. Hampton's point is. Having a ADP, uh, dedicated, uh, either staff or team or, you know, however that looks. From whatever broker that we go with, um, um, to be able to, because we have that, um, you know, those face-to-face, those monthly meetings with our broker. And so having, um, that expertise on, on that side, um, would be helpful to us. And so I just wanted to, to add that, that piece as well. And if they are able to do that, they will give us that information. But I, I'm gathering that the, the takeaways that they took back from our discussion, um. Would allow them to be able to, uh, buy you all what they can, um, you know, what they can provide to us. Or in if, or if not, but I will, um, ensure that you all receive that information. And it has any, you know, anything that we've addressed as a concern, um, that at the end of the day, you all have final collective information. So that you can, um, make your, make a decision.
So everybody would make sure that you, if you haven't, take a look at, uh, the, the, uh, attachments have been provided. And, uh, some of you may have already done that and you have an idea who you like, uh, but, uh, does anybody else have any comments?
Coach Watts, uh, Mark Adams here. I do, uh, just an observation. First of all, a question, when, when do we need to take action? How much time do we have to continue to work on this before? We need to sign a contract or renew? That's the first question.
Well, I would say, Councilman Adams, with, uh, because of the, um, that we're already working with NFP. We, you all had made, uh, we had talked to you all about not moving away from them for this benefits year. So, um, I would say, Tia, no later than June, correct?
Um, I think in our current, um, um, memo, um, contract or, uh, agreement. Any notification to, if you all want to make a change would be, um, sixty days.
Okay, so it's not, it's not as though we have.
And this is a time also, I'm sorry, Councilman Adams, a time for us where we're, it's critical for us, um, as we. Excuse me, um, go to, uh, our renewal, um, timeline and, um, looking at, um, our rates for twenty twenty-one. That's coming up very soon. We, we usually start that in the summer. Um, and so, um. You know, as we, uh, as the City Manager has said, you know, if, if there is a change, um, it would, we would be looking at twenty twenty-one. But it, we are in, um, getting ready to enter the peak time for renewal, uh, and rate renewals.
Yes.
So we just want to keep that in mind as well.
My, my concern is if they're the present broker, I know they've been through a, a, a merger. It would seem to me that they would have had the same opportunity or would have wanted the same opportunity to have presented. To us like the other two have. And if, and at the same time, if they know what our need is with ADP and they've not been able to. Supply that to us, why now in the eleventh hour do they want to bring more information? Have they had ample time to do that? Has that request been out there long enough to justify or not allow? For more information at this time? I'm, I'm a little confused there.
Councilman Adams, I'll, I'll take that question. I will say that that's probably on me. Because when we first were going through this process, um, a lot of the companies that are, just the two companies that we presented to you all. Were completely different from Shaw Hankins. They were offering services that weren't even apples to oranges. In the interim, Shaw Hankins merged with NFP. So as Ms. Austin Bing mentioned, we did not go through a formal, um, RFP process because we actually wanted to show you all. What options were out there if we were to leave. So now you actually, in a sense, have three companies that offer the same because Shaw Hankins is now, uh, with a larger company. So, um, if you want us to back up and punt and go through the RFP process, we can do that. Uh, but the other option would be, you've seen the other two, now you can see, uh, NFP to see how you can compare. Cause now you have a third company that would be similar.
I, thank you, thank you, Ms. Hampton. And I would just suggest that we allow them to do a presentation if we have the time. Uh, and I would also suggest if we have the time, could we do it in the same general layout that we did the other two? That being potentially if we go back in late May or the first of June. To, uh, somewhat normal operations in person, that they, um. That they make that presentation to us in the same form that the other two were given the opportunity. That's just, that's just my request. I mean, I understand if that's not feasible.
Yes, sir. And if we can't do that, we can do a presentation via Zoom. Uh, we can try to get that done at your next round of meetings. Um, and you would just have to be able to view it on the screen if we're not all together in the same room. Yes, sir, we can do that.
Sure, sure. I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hampton, and thank you, Coach Watts.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Ms. Bing, how long's it been? How, we've been with them for how many years now?
We're in our seventh year, twenty thirteen.
And you, uh, and normally, it's normal for mo- most, uh, municipalities. To, uh, take a look every three years?
From the municipalities that I've, that I've worked in and, and, um, have close relationships with, um, they, um. They, um, three years, um, it's about the standard. Three to four years, um.
So we're a little overdue for comparing.
And, and part of the reason also, Coach, I want to add this, seven, you were with seven years with Shaw Hankins. This is the first time you're with NFP. So in a sense, you're with the, really, you're with a different company. Almost not outside of your own choosing because there's been a merger.
Right. Okay. Well, I think Councilman Adams had a good point. If we could let them present and see what they can do. And if, you know, and then we can make a, a good educated, uh, decision. But if there are no other comments, um, Madam Mayor, that's all I had. Uh, in that item, Personnel and Organization. Thank you, Ms. Bing.
Thank you so much. We'll move on. Um, yes, ma'am. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilwoman Mark Adams. Um, Staff Report on Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Alrighty. Staff Report on the Community Development Department being in full operation and recommendation to repeal zoning moratorium. Ms. Patrice Williams is, I think, has already discussed that with us, uh, but I'm sure that she has some additional information. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'll just add a little, uh, new information. Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Um, as you already know, the Community Development Department will be in full operation as of Monday, May fourth. At eight AM, staff will be working on rotations, which will allow us to follow the social distancing guidelines provided by the CDC. City Hall Annex will continue to be closed to the public and all applicants will be directed to City Hall to make payments. Or they may mail their payments to the department. As addressed earlier, the Community Development Department is recommending the repeal of the current zoning moratorium. The building division will begin utilizing blue bean software for plan review. Along with traditional methods of review and send comments to applicants electronically. The zoning division has several items. It will begin processing immediately following the repeal of the moratorium. The June planning commission meeting will be a virtual meeting and all other subsequent meetings until further notice. As the department moves forward, staff will continue to tweak the process to ensure superior, superior customer service identified. And our mission statement is being provided to the residents and applicants.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Kudos to you and your staff. We look forward to, uh, that department reopening. I know there's been a lot of adjustment to be made during the last few weeks. And, um, I'll open the floor to anyone that may have a comment or question concerning this planned reopening. Any comment or question? Again, thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you to your staff for all your hard work. Keep it up and, uh, we look forward to seeing how that works out. That's all that we have there.
So much for your support.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Williams. You're welcome. And we'll move on to E, our last, um. Item in this section, and, uh, the chair is for, uh, Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee is Councilmember Chris Watts. And he's going to talk about West Pines. You got them mute.
On mute now. How, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, one item, Staff Report on Reopening Operations of West Pine Golf Course. And I believe we have Mr. Cartwright here to talk about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Go ahead, Mr. Cartwright.
Yes, sir.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Just to, uh, go over kind of our plans. If, uh, it pleases you guys for us to reopen on May fourth. Excuse me, let me back up. Chris Cartwright, ninety ninety Rose Avenue, Douglasville, Georgia. Uh, just to go over our plans with you guys, if, uh, it pleases y'all for us to reopen on Monday, May fourth. Uh, we had a few concerns with the golf operations as a whole, and just to highlight a few of those, that's the clubhouse. The golf carts themselves and the overall social distancing aspect of the facility. Specifically, when you're on the course at the holes themselves, uh, you know. The whole point of playing is getting that ball to the hole at the end of, end of each hole. And everyone reaching in, grabbing the golf ball out of that same hole just prevents a lot of issues for maybe some transfer of germs. Uh, so just to run down the PDF attachment that you guys have in front of you. Overall, changes that we'll be making is one player per golf cart. Uh, we have seventy-two golf carts in our fleet. So most of the time when you go out and play, you're riding with someone else. So this essentially will cut our capacity in half. To offset the capacity issues, we'll be adjusting our tee times and availability to fifteen-minute intervals. And we will also be limiting groups to no more than four players. So specifically on the weekends, we may have a group of eight or twelve or sixteen, multiple tee times back-to-back. And then they're congregating in the clubhouse or in the parking lot after their round. Good camaraderie, but we need to minimize that group interaction at the moment. Again, the tee times are necessary because of the golf cart inventory and how limited we are in our supply. The clubhouse will be closed to all customers and will go to a curbside style check-in. More on that later. And we have found a new product on the market called the Easy Lift Ball Retriever. That will be installed on all eighteen flag sticks. It keeps the player from having to actually reach into the hole to get their golf ball out. So in those three pictures, the ball goes in, you can use your putter or your foot to lift the lever out of the cup. And that literally spits your golf ball out of the hole. And then you can pick it up without touching and everybody getting into the same apparatus. It's pretty genius. Whoever came up with it obviously did it before the pandemic, but they, uh, had a good invention there. I did want to make sure that pointed out, we're looking at some staffing adjustments in order to make sure everything is safe. For both the customers and the staff. You see those numbers down there. Those are an increase of the normal staffing amounts that we would have. So, again, for that curbside check-in, we'll have a, a staff member greeting the customer. And then we will still have a staff member at the normal desk running the point-of-sale system. Keeping track of all the daily sales, answering the phone to make tee times. So in some of these operations, we are essentially having to double our staff members in order for us to get open. We have been fortunate to find enough gloves and masks and sanitizers and cleaning products. To prepare for this. That's what I've been spending the last couple of weeks on. Uh, it's a little tough lately, but we've been able to find everything that we need. And obviously, our staff will maintain the social distancing six feet away from everyone. So turning to the next page, uh, just to go over that curbside check-in process. Uh, this will take place at the back door of the pro shop here. And we have Plexiglas installed over that opening to maintain the, the, uh, safety between customers and staff. And we will not be accepting cash at this time. We're going to go to credit card only. We have a new credit card terminal, hopefully showing up tomorrow morning. That will be a customer-facing credit card terminal, similar, similar to what you would see at a Target or a Publix. So that the customer is inserting their own card rather than passing it back and forth to the staff members. One issue that we have had in the past, we have not accepted Discover Card. We are working with our credit card merchant to accept Discover Card to hopefully offset some of the. Difficulty of only accepting credit cards at this time. Just for an ins- for instance, for you guys, we are seventy-six percent credit card and twenty-four percent cash normally. So the bulk and the majority of our transactions have always been credit card. But we still want to make that twenty-four percent of our customer base feel welcome. When they call in advance or make a tee time, they'll be informed of the new policy. We can't help if somebody walks in and hasn't called in advance. They may not know about it, but we'll do everything we can to spread that message. So again, we'll have a staff member greeting you at the back door curbside. We'll have a staff member running the point-of-sale and computer system, and then we will be letting the customers know about our new policies when they call in. The next page is about golf cart sanitization, cleaning all the golf carts. They will be limited to one rider per cart, as I mentioned, unless they're members of the same household. Obviously, if you're living together, cohabitating, you can ride in a golf cart together, no issues there. So as long as that's proven documented, we'll allow the customers to ride together. So this is the big key, in my opinion, for getting this operation back up and running safely, is after each round of golf, the golf carts will be pressure washed and then dried, and then sanitized with a non-rinse cleaning agent that has to air dry for maximum disinfection. Hot, specific areas that are touched a lot, like the steering wheel, the keys, the new GPS screens, they will get an additional round of cleaning after each use. We will be using additional staff members in order to make this happen. These are coming from Jesse Davis Park and Hunter Park. And just the three pictures you see in front of you about the golf cart, we took a, a golf cart and we marked it up with the blue tape so that these new staff members could really understand where the customer is frequently touching, since they're not normally golf employees and they're not around golf carts a lot. We wanted to make sure that they understand these are the areas that have to be thoroughly, thoroughly cleaned. So taking our cleaning procedures a step farther with the golf carts, for sure. The fourth page there, going over some social distancing that we'll be doing around the practice facilities. We would like to open the driving range and the putting green at this time, but we will have the stations set up so that the six-foot or more distance is maintained at all times. So those top two pictures, you can see we've taken some temporary fencing, cut them into actually seven-foot sections, laying them down on the turf so that the customers have to maintain that distance apart. So those are the hitting areas for the driving range that you see on the top two pictures. The putting green, the holes are often spaced far enough apart, so that's not an issue. And inside of each hole is actually a cut pool noodle that keeps the ball from falling into the bottom of the hole. It's the same issue that we have on the golf course, so you can just take your putter or your foot and kick that ball off the top of the pool noodle. It allows our customers to practice, warm up before their round without decreasing their safety while doing so. And then also back to the driving range, those bottom two pictures, we are always cleaning the driving range golf balls before they're used. We're going to up our game and clean every round twice. So before that golf ball goes back to a new customer, they might have touched it to clean it or wipe it off or put it on a tee. Those golf balls will all be cleaned twice during our ball washer with a antibacterial soap, and the range bags that they are sold in will be lysol between each round as well. A couple of days ago, but after I put all this together, the PGA of America, USGA, and the National Golf Foundation released a COVID reopening plan for golf courses to follow. They based theirs off of the CDC three-phase reopening plan. Everything that I've mentioned falls perfectly in line with what they're calling Phase One. So I feel very good about that. So Phase One is what we're talking about today. Hopefully, we'll be able to move on to Phase Two soon, which is getting back to more of a normal operating procedures, allowing customers to ride with each other in the golf carts. And then Phase Three is your, what they're calling a new normal, or we might get back to having the large tournaments and outings, but still maintaining social distances. So that's about all I have to present. I'm sure there's maybe some questions or comments, and we'll jump into that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. Very thorough, and I, and I I really like the detail that y'all have taken to open safely. Just, I just have a couple of questions before we open it up. The, so the social, have, have y'all had any, there's been a lot of people on the golf course the last couple of weeks. I've been out there a couple of times and played myself, seen a lot of different people, maybe smaller groups than normal, because everybody's walking, but have you had any, and I asked Mr. Landrum this, have you heard anything from any of your employees that have been out on the golf course at the same time working on projects, anybody that's expressed any concerns about the golfers that have used the golf course in the last few weeks?
We've not had any specific issues. It has helped tremendously keeping the barricade up till 2:00 p.m. Most of the maintenance staff is there very early in the morning and working more of a 6:00 a.m. to, to 2:00 p.m. schedule. So that's helped a lot. But like City Manager Mrs. Hampton said the other day in the budget meeting, we can educate the social distancing rules and procedures. It, you know, the governor has dictated who can actually enforce them. So common sense not being so common, there are going to be some social distancing issues, but we'll just do the best we can to educate and post the signs and the warnings and make sure that people understand what is expected of them, even if we can't actually force them to follow everything.
Okay, and any, will it, during this Phase One opening, will there be any lessons?
The PGA is in their Phase One. They do say the lessons can take place, obviously maintaining the distancing. As you saw with the new golf building, we do have that video software that really helps with that procedure a lot. I'm personally thinking we'll probably wait another week or two before we start with lessons. I need to make sure that my attention is focused on getting the golf operations back up and running and making sure that all the staff understands the new policies and procedures. But I would, I would say that maybe in a couple of weeks, we're back to offering the lessons, the club things, things of that nature.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go around real quick, and Councilman Adams, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Coach Watts, and, and Mr. Cartwright, I want to congratulate you on a great plan, a very detailed plan. I think it's a great job that you and your staff have done in preparation to get the, to get reopened. Just one question about the carts. Since you're going to limit the cart use to one per golfer, does, does that mean that the cart revenue will go up? Or are we going, what are we doing about that? What is the normal procedure, and what are we doing now?
So normally, you, you're charged per player to play regardless if you are sharing a cart or riding in a cart by yourself. So I, I do anticipate this to, in one sense, it's going to hurt revenue per round, per cart, that sort of thing. However, you know, I'm seeing how many people are coming out and walking. I do definitely, I anticipate us being very busy. I think people are ready to get out of their houses, houses and enjoy the outdoors again. So I think we're going to be spreading out our play more than we used to, rather than being concentrated specifically in the mornings or late afternoons after work. I anticipate a slight decrease in revenue, but I think it's going to be more spread out through, throughout the day, if that answers your question. But specifically, we're not altering our rates in any way, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you. Good luck to you. Hope it works out. Thank you for all you all are doing.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller.
Don't have any questions. Just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your effort that you've put into this and all your thought to keep our, our citizens safe while getting them back outdoors. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
I don't have any comments. I just want to thank Mr. Cartwright. You, you bleed golf. So thank you so much. You did an excellent job with the presentation.
In a rough few weeks.
Yes, sir. Thank you for everything you're doing, you and your staff at West Pines. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim Miller.
I'm sure I have no questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Dr. Councilwoman Burdanley.
Thank you, Chairman Watts. I have no questions, but thank you, Mr. Cartwright, for being so thorough and detailed.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Burdanley. Councilman Davis.
Yes, I have quite a bit of question. You said it'd be a decrease in revenue to cart?
Yes, yes, sir, just because of inventory issues. Normally with 72 golf carts, we could handle 144 players, and now we'll be able to handle 72 players.
So how many employers are you looking at employing over there?
We, we have not furloughed any, or planning to furlough or lay off any of our employees, and we're picking up an additional five employees from other departments around the park system.
Okay.
It will be an increase in staffing.
Increase in staffing. So what happened when it rains? We, we, rain, what happened?
Same procedures as we normally have. There might be some light duties and work to be done, but they'll be allowed to leave early and, and clock out when they go.
Okay, are there any other golf courses open?
So statewide, about 73% of the golf courses stayed open. 27% did close. The bulk of that 27% is municipalities like ourselves or the very, very high-end clubs, they closed as well. The majority of clubs did stay, did stay open, but while we've been closed, it's allowed us to really see the best practices that they all put in place, and we're putting them all together to make this plan.
So Mirror Lake open?
Mirror Lake is open, yes, sir.
That's where a lot of them playing at now?
Well, Mirror Lake and Chapel Hill are, are private golf clubs, so if, I wouldn't say our customers are playing there now, but since they weren't members before, unless they did join during this.
I don't know. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Council Davis. Councilman Estes.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. One last thing I'd like to, to point out, and, and Mr. Cartwright said it very well. We're, we're able to take on some folks that might otherwise fall into a, a furlough category, so that, that's, that's a good thing, too. We're, we're keeping people working in the parks and rec as, as much as we can, and I think that's great. So great job, Mr. Cartwright, great presentation. Any, anything else before we close this out? All right, Mr. Landrum, I, I believe going forward, it doesn't sound like anybody's objecting to opening up on, on Monday.
I do.
Well, that's taken into account, but I didn't hear. Is there anybody else that has a issue with the golf course opening up on Monday based on everything that you've heard? Ms. Hampton, so is that, give them their marching orders for Monday?
All right, I had the, it does, give them their marching orders. We, we feel if there's going to be any issue at any given time, we can pull back. Mr. Cartwright, as was stated before, he's well intent on what's going on, so if at any given point we feel like it's going to be a danger to the citizens or our staff members, we will pull back and do something different.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. I also like to point out that during the closure, the several times I was out there, we had employees still working, finishing projects, working on golf paths. A lot of things were improved. So thank you also for your leadership in that, Mr. Landrum, Mr. Cartwright. So that's all I had in, under Recreation, Culture, Tourism, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it. Thank you again, Mr. Cartwright and Mr. Landrum. We appreciate your work, and if the PGA have requirements, then we'll make certain, as Mr. Cartwright said, that he is in, in line with those requirements as well. So we'll just move forward. Thank you again. We're going to take a 10-minute break, but before we do that, Ms. Cochran, Angie Cochran with Courts had a brief update for us. Then we will take a 10-minute break before we go into executive session. So Ms. Cartwright, I mean, Ms. Cochran, do you have something for us?
Well, the only thing that I have is the Council of Municipal Court Judges did release a best practices today. Just right before we came on to council of how we should operate, and it's in line with everything that we're going to do to operate. We are going to open the pay window Monday and start taking payments that way. And, but as of right now, I just got all this information, so I've, I've not sat down and really had time to really read it. The, the Judicial Council still has not come out with a statement saying if we are going to be able to open May 13th or not. So I'm waiting on that right now, but if, if it closed, then if they keep us closed, but with this coming out, I'm pretty sure they're going to let us do it in smaller sessions and staggered sessions, just to get us up and going.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Cochran. We appreciate the update. I know things are changing. Not daily, but a lot, definitely weekly. We, I know the governor had, there, he extends a public health emergency for all Georgians to shelter in place. So while we were meeting at 6:00, he had a, another conference that says on WSB, so we'll, we'll get that information as well.
Yes, and as soon as I find out, I will let y'all know about the judicial councils' order if they're going to let us reopen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Ms. Cochran. Do you have any other staff reports? City manager?
No, ma'am. The only other thing that I have, and, and just in light of time to cover on Monday, if I can get some direction from you all on the request from the Development Authority, I will tell you, based on the information that I sent you from those other two cities, my recommendation is you all hold off on making a determination on including anything in the budget for the Development Authority's request. If you can see those two cities that I specifically got information from, they have particular funding sources that we just don't have, and their process is very detailed, but I will get final direction from you all under staff reports on Monday, if you don't mind. If you can look over those and let me know.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Do we have any comments from citizens and delegates?
Miss, Madam Mayor, this is Kelsey Jackson. We don't have any comments from citizen delegates.
Okay, thank you so much, Assistant City Manager. It is now 8:43. Let's say 45. So if we can be back in 10 minutes, so that is five minutes to nine. So I'll open the floor to adjourn to executive session for, we'll take a we'll take a break, and then we'll come back and do adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter and property disposition. So after our 10-minute break, I will come back and we'll do an adjourn to executive session. I'll open the floor. There you go. I'm trying to get the meeting, Ms. Littlefield, if I'm doing this correctly. I don't want to mess it up.
You need a motion? I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Executive session.
Thank you so much. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim to adjourn to executive session for a purpose of discussing a personnel matter and property disposition. Is there a second?
Second.
Does that miss Miller?
That was me.
Thank you. So I have this motion and second to adjourn to executive session. It's been properly moved to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That sounds like everyone. I'm looking, trying to move and see faces while you're saying, any opposed? Thank you. It's been unanimously, we are adjourned to executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter and property disposition after a 10-minute recess. We're now in recess. Sorry about that.